Buenas y mananas. We're back in session this morning. We are on second reading, and we will resume with bill number 152-36COR. Senator Taitegui, you are recognized.
Sidozmasi, Madam Speaker, and good morning to my colleagues. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, a motion to place Bill 152-36COR as substituted by the Committee on General Government Operations Appropriation and Housing, which embraces recommendations offered by the Legal Bureau last week, which was after Bill 125-36 was reported out. I think I'll pause because I know that there might be something clerks need. Would you like me to continue?
Senator, just to clarify, so you said as substituted by the committee?
On general government operations.
Not as substituted on the floor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, that's true.
Okay, so the version we have from the committee says as amended by the committee.
Yes, as substituted and amended.
Are you trying to substitute it on the floor or not?
Yeah, maybe if I word it like this, Madam Speaker, if this is correct, notwithstanding the House rules, a motion to place Bill 152-36 as amended by the Committee on General Operation Appropriations and Housing with a substituted version, which embraces recommendations offered by Legal Bureau last week, which, after Bill 152-36COR was reported out, is that a better?
Yes, okay, so that's, I'm going to treat this as a motion to accept the substituted on the floor version of the bill. It is uploaded in the drive, and I believe everyone has had this available to them. It's also been passed out on the floor.
Okay, and if I can finish on that introduction, Madam Speaker, as mentioned, as reported out, these edits were suggested by the Legal Bureau, which includes form and style changes and technical corrections, clarifications, clarification of status to be repealed, addition of language from the Guam Code annotated, which was incomplete in the early version, removal of language from the Guam Code annotated, which do not specifically pertain to a special fund, ensuring that Section 1 of the bill also covers any reference made to inactive special funds in the Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations. So Bill 152-36 as substituted was introduced by myself, Senator Sabina Perez, Senator Joanne Brown, and is enacted to close inactive government of Guam special fund accounts and to repeal enabling legislation of such inactive government of Guam special fund accounts as recommended by the Office of the Public Accountability, OPA, pursuant to OPA Report Number 1902.
All right. On that motion to accept the bill as substituted on the floor, is there any objection? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion is carried. Please proceed on the substitute bill.
Sidozmasi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I motion to place Bill 152-36COR as substituted on the floor in the third reading filed, and I ask for the opportunity to speak on the bill. Please proceed. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and for the opportunity again to provide an overview of Bill 152-36COR as substituted, which responds to a request made by the OPA Office through Report Number 1902 for the legislature to close inactive government of Guam special funds. Madam Speaker, OPA Report Number 1902 highlights 86 special funds, including 30 accounts that should be closed as suggested in prior audits, recommendations made in audit report in 2004, also in 2006, OPA audit reports. And just for the record, and my colleagues to know that it is practiced that the OPA reviews these special fund reports if they are dormant for 10 years and then report on it. So you can imagine, Madam Speaker, the first report coming out in 2004 are accounts that had been dormant within that 10-year period. And then again in 2006, OPA Report 1902 was just reported out in recent, in 2019. So Madam Speaker, and for the benefit of my colleagues and the listening audience, inactive special revenue funds include but are not limited to the 1999 South Pacific Games revolving fund, the Comité Paratidzan Fund, Off-Ireland Travel Fund, and the Construction/Dedido Precinct Crime Lab Fund, which all have zero balances per the OPA Report 1902. Madam Speaker, as I shared during the public hearing held on July 29, 2021, while I continue to support the existence of special funds in order to assist departments and agencies to provide critical support and services without relying heavily on the general fund, I also recognize the importance of examining on a regular basis whether certain accounts should be repealed because inactivity or if they no longer serve the purpose for which they were intended. According to the OPA Report 1902, between June 6, 1995, and September 30, 2017, DOA established 194 special funds within its physical management system. Of the 194, 86 were inactive for approximately 1 to 12 years as of FY 2017. The number of special funds have been increasing because dormant or inactive special funds can only be closed by enabling legislation. Moreover, most of these inactive funds were already recommended for repeal in prior audits, but recommendations were not acted upon. And when this was brought to my attention, Madam Speaker, I remember a former speaker, B.J. Cruz, now the public auditor, says, "Well, you know, Telo, this is not a very glamorous bill," you know, "but it needs to be done for accountability purposes." So in closing, Madam Speaker, I thank the Legal Bureau and the Oversight Committee for helping to prepare Bill 152, including the recommendations offered in this updated version. In addition to the edits summarized earlier, Bill 152 as substituted provides Exhibit A for easy reference for those accounts that are to be affected by this bill, makes forms and style edits where necessary, and removes the original Section 8 from the bill relative to the Guam Housing Corporation revolving loan fund. The revolving loan fund will be addressed at a later time through the introduction of a separate measure after consulting with the OPA and the Guam Housing Corporation. Madam Speaker, at this time, the bill does not act on two other special funds, which were included in the list of 30 funds from the OPA's report recommended for repeal, namely the Guam Beautification Fund and the other deals with municipal litter defacement. As my colleagues are aware, these two funds were impacted by Bill 116, which we discussed earlier during our September 2021 legislative session. Madam Speaker, DOA also supported this bill, and a copy of his testimony, DOA's testimony, is in the committee report. Unfortunately, he wasn't there for the public hearing due to his off-island. At the request of the Department Administration, Bill 152 was also updated to include language requiring that all amounts remaining in the special fund account subject to closure, if any, shall be deposited into the general fund prior to such closure, and such funds will be subject to legislative appropriation. The amendment ensures that Fund Number 309, relative to Hagatna fractional lots, and which carries a balance of $90,169.40, according to DRO, will not be adversely impacted. With that, Madam Speaker, I respectfully ask my colleagues for their support for Bill 152 so that, as the former speaker and current public auditor encouraged us during the public hearing, we can make our government more efficient. Sidozmasi.
Sidozmasi, Senator, on the bill. Is there anyone who'd like to be recognized on the bill? Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Sidozmasi, Madam Speaker, and good morning to my colleagues. I rise in full support of this legislation or this bill, and I'm really grateful that the author sought my, you know, advice before she went ahead and proffered the bill, and as she spoke earlier on the bill, that there were two funds that would affect litter control, and so this was important that it was removed from the list. I also got the chance to speak to Director Byrne, who's in full support, and I think it's about time that we act on the public auditor's recommendations. I think it's a good thing that it has the support of the public auditor as well. So I'm very grateful that I was asked to be a co-sponsor, so I rise in full support. Sidozmasi.
Sidozmasi, on the bill. Is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the bill? Senator Sinagastin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of this bill. This is something that our office was looking at, and Senator Telo beat me to the punch. So that's good. It still serves the same purpose. And unfortunately, I forgot my notes. I wanted to explain about each fund site of exactly how it impacts, but generally speaking, all those funds that were identified have been inactive for numerous years, if not decades, and it served its purpose, and deleting it, removing it from the accounts is the best thing, and then we're going to be identifying more funds to start removing from the accounts. Thank you, Madam Speaker, but I stand in full support of this bill.
Sidozmasi, Senator, on the bill. Is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the bill? If not, then the senator may close, sponsor may close.
Sidozmasi, Madam Speaker, and I thank all my co-sponsors of this legislation. I'd like to make one amendment on this legislation, and that is to include Senator Joe Sinagastin as a co-sponsor to this legislation, please.
On the motion to include Senator Sinagastin as a co-sponsor, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
Sidozmasi, Madam, thank you, and I motion to place Bill 152-36COR as substituted into the voting file.
On the motion to place in the third reading, is there any objection? Hearing no objection, motion carries. Senator Taitegui, you are recognized.
Sidozmasi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I motion to place Bill 179-36LS as amended by the Committee on Health, Land Justice, and Culture, with a substituted version, which embraces recommendations offered by Legal Bureau following the reporting out of Bill 179-36COR. Suggested edits included clear language requiring the promulgation of rules and regulations pursuant to the Administrative Judication Act, clarification on the requirement of Department of Public Health Social Service to conduct a public hearing for interim rules and regulations, and clarifications regarding language requiring a copy of interim rules to be filed with the legislature, which would then provide such information via our website for public review. Both items are discussed during the public hearing on this measure, inclusions of the definition for the term adoption agency. And this is Bill 179, I mean, 179-36LS as substituted, enacted to add a new 13510 and 13503, H. All of Article 5 of Chapter 13, Title 19, Guam Code annotated, relative to requiring rules and regulations for the legislature of adoption agencies, and to add the definition for an adoption agency. And this is sponsored by myself, Senator Sabina Perez, Senator Joanne Brown, and Speaker Therese Chirlahi.
On the motion to adopt Bill 179-36LS as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture, and as substituted on the floor, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Please proceed, Senator Taitegui.
Sidozmasi, Madam Speaker, and Madam Speaker, I motion to place Bill 179-36 as substituted in the third reading filed for the opportunity to speak on the bill.
The motion's been accepted. Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and for the opportunity to summarize Bill 179-36 as substituted on the floor, I did provide all my colleagues a copy, a hard copy, on their desk this morning for them to review as well. Madam Speaker, several months ago, during our discussion on two adoption-related bills, this legislature received an official letter from the Department of Public Health Deputy Director and Social Services, who asked if references contained in those proposals to duly licensed adoption agencies under Guam law pertain to agency's business license status provided by the Guam Department of Revenue and Taxation. The Public Health Deputy Director further asked whether such a reference to a process that needs to be developed, which would license and regulate private adoption agencies, as the deputy director was not aware of existing rules and regulations for adoption agencies to be licensed on Guam. Madam Speaker, because I and a few of our colleagues were unable to convince the majority of this legislature in July of this year to require rules and regulations before authorizing independent adoption agencies to operate, I proceeded to draft a short and straightforward bill to require Public Health to develop such rules and regulations. I presented to draft a Bill 179-36 to the leadership of the Public Health and CPS staff and the Governor's Policy Office during a meeting on August 13, 2021, which included Senator Perez and Senator Brown. For the record, I don't remember any concerns being raised during our discussion except a request by the Governor's Policy Office to delete certain statements in the bill's Legislative Findings and Intent section. Madam Speaker, Bill 179-36 was introduced on August 13, 2021, and was referred on September 3, 2020, to the Legislative Committee on Tourism, Air Transportation, and Women's Affairs. Nearly one month later, on September 30, 2021, and at your request, Bill 179-36 was re-referred to the proper Legislative Committee, which has jurisdiction over Public Health and Child Protective Services. Madam Speaker, Bill 179-36 had had a long struggle to get where we are today. Bill 179-36 received a public hearing on October 8, 2021, which yielded the version that we had before us, requiring Public Health to promulgate rules and regulations by June 1, 2022. It was the same bill that was supported during that meeting with no issues other than the legislative intent to move forward with this bill for introduction. So this was done prior to introducing the legislation. Because two other adoption-related, and this was because two other adoption-related bills were approved several months ago, allowing adoption agencies to operate without rules and regulations. Bill 179-36 as substitute also requires Public Health to develop interim rules and regulations, which would be exempt from the administrative adjudication law and would remain in effect until June 1, 2022, or when the final set of rules are adopted pursuant to the administrative adjudication law, whichever occurs sooner. Public Health is required to hold a public hearing to receive comments, and the agency shall submit a copy of the interim rules in the legislature, which would be required to be published, this information on the website, for no less than 30 days prior to its implementation. Madam Speaker, Bill 179-36 as substituted is a good step forward in our effort as an island community to protect our most vulnerable children against criminal activity such as human trafficking. In closing, Madam Speaker, while there's been a clear effort by some to bury the facts related to the action this body took several months ago in permitting adoption agencies to operate without licensure's rules and regulations in place, much time and energy have also been expended in a calculated attempt to criticize Bill 179-36 as non-transparent. Madam Speaker, I cannot in good conscience allow personal agendas or a desire by politicians to save face, to somehow control the narrative and overshadow the importance of passing Bill 179-36, especially when there's already an adoption company advertising in our local newspapers. Madam Speaker, not only is Bill 179-36 as substituted transparent, this proposal acknowledges and seeks to correct before it's too late the reckless decision, as a local news company opined, of putting the carabao before the cart. Sidozmasi, Madam Speaker.
Sidozmasi, Senator, on the bill, Bill Number 179-36. Is there anyone who'd like to be recognized? Senator Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I certainly do rise in support of Bill 179-36. You know, as we recall, a few months ago, Madam Speaker, the debate we had on the floor with regards to the adoption, the bill that would allow adoption agencies to have a more direct involvement with regards to decisions made by Public Health on where these children would be placed, and the degree of their engagement all the way to sitting at the table, to be actually contributing to those decisions. I think we all recognize that there's a need in our community to address our children, that for whatever circumstance they come from, in some cases, unfortunately, their parents, for whatever reason, are not able to properly care for them and provide them the safe, loving, caring home environment that we ideally would want to see for all our children, that they end up being literally the custodians of the government of Guam. And so here we are in this situation. I think we made it very clear, we don't have any argument about the need to have adoption agencies. As a matter of fact, they certainly can help facilitate the very desires of what we're talking about in providing good homes for children, because there are families here, there are individuals in our community that may not have children, may not be able to have children, may have had children that have grown and left the nest, so to speak, and want to contribute to helping back and helping others to grow and learn and have a better future. And certainly, adoption agencies can bridge that gap. But the main concern we raised, my dear colleagues, when the previous legislation was passed a few months ago, is the fact that there really are not any clear outlined regulations in current law to ensure that the processes and procedures and expectations we would have in terms of how adoption agencies operate, are those were not clearly outlined. Granted, there are adoptions that occur in our community, most of them through the court, they could be private adoptions that are handled with attorneys, you have some that may already know or desire who they would like to have their children placed, it might also be a fellow family member. So yes, adoptions do occur in our community and have for quite some time. But when we're talking about the process now of a formal organization providing that, I think in all fairness, we want to make sure that those that are involved in providing this service have certain standards and requirements, and also protects their interests as well, because then they know what the expectations are of them to operate in this community. So they as well have a guideline, and certainly, OHLA Adoption Agency has come forth at these public hearings, they've come and met with us individually, I'm sure met with other colleagues here, to also relay that they would like to see standards put in place so that they know what their expectations are on behalf of this community and of this government that they would need to meet. And I think none of those are unreasonable expectations. But unfortunately, Madam Speaker, this particular issue has gotten messed up in the whole political nonsense that goes on here. And colleagues, I'm going to raise this again, because you know, when we continue to do things that are not right, you know, it comes back to us, especially when bills, as we've seen in some cases, get routed to the wrong committee, because certain people want to make sure their bills get facilitated the way they want it, and then others, you know, their bills get left behind somehow, so certain bills get moved forward in the agenda. And that's what happened with this particular issue in adoption. Who would think that the issue of adoption would bring, you know, rear its ugly head with the kind of nonsense that goes on? I mean, we're all grown adults, we've all been elected to be responsible to the community of which has elected us, and I hope in the future that when we do bill referrals, we do them fairly. If someone comes first, then by all means, let their bill go forward, whoever it is. But when we do this type of stuff, all the way to watching administration officials who say one thing at a meeting that they have, and then publicly say another, because they're expected to only support certain members of this legislature. You know, they have the choice to do that, but that doesn't mean it's right in how they do it in their official capacities. So, you know, I stand behind this bill, I hope colleagues now, there's a greater sense of enlightenment that we now have than what we did a few months ago. I don't know why, why in terms of our responsibilities here, we simply didn't include a simple amendment into that bill to allow for the development of rules and regulations. Public Health has the ability to do that. They talked about transparency during this last public hearing, and it's amazing, because we had a hearing on Friday on this bill, and on Monday, two days later, on another bill, pretty much similar on track with what it's intending to do. And in one bill, and we know bills can very simply be amended, but again, we're very clear on the view of the administration, because these are not the right people. See, the names that are at the top of this bill are not the right people. And that's really unfortunate, because it sidesteps the real issue of what the mission is, and I won't be surprised, even with all the good efforts of ourselves and our good colleague Senator Taitegui, maybe this bill gets vetoed, big veto on it. Is it because of the content? No, it's going to be because of the politics if this actually gets vetoed. I don't think I'll be surprised. But really, on this particular issue, the issue with regards to how do we ensure the safe welfare and caretaking of our children, that even in this community, this small island community that we have, of course, of all of us, of your children, your grandchildren, perhaps some great-grandchildren, we're very loving and caring towards. And who would think that there are children that fall through the process, that don't get that kind of support? And yet, we would politicize this issue. Of all the things that we could argue and debate, this issue becomes politicized in this body and politicized down at Adalou. How unfortunate. But you know what? Let's call it for what it is. I do hope, colleagues, you're a little wiser about this issue and wanting to support the requirement of having regulations in place, because really, that's really all this issue came down to, having standards and regulations in place so that OHLA, as an adoption agency or any other agency that wants to come into Guam or here on Guam and be developed to provide this service, simply knows what the requirements are, and we also will have the same expectation of what their role is and what their expectations are. And even more importantly, because we are realizing the government itself cannot absorb all these responsibilities, it doesn't have the resources to do that. So I rise in support of this bill, colleagues, and I certainly hope, you know, we rise above the politics and support this bill and the intent of this legislation, so that we can have some sense of comfort that children in this community that have a great need, that have a great need to have a good home, a good, caring, loving home, will have that, and that these adoption agencies can help facilitate and provide that partnership with the government to make that possible. With that, again, Madam Speaker, I rise in support of Bill 179-36. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this bill.
Thank you, Senator Brown. On Bill 179-36, is there any other member who'd like to be recognized? Senator Paris, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of Bill 179-36. I think it closes a loophole that was left on a legislation that was passed recently, which is Public Law 36-39. And in that law, it allowed for a duly licensed adoption agency to take part in the placement of children. And what we, in that discussion, it was found that what exactly is a duly licensed adoption agency is basically an agency that obtains a business license as any retailer would obtain. And what's truly lacking are these rules and regs that are needed to assure that the adoption agencies are held to a higher standard, especially if we're dealing with placement of children. So I applaud the efforts of the sponsor of this bill to close that loophole so quickly after the passage of that bill, Bill 108. And I think it's very reasonable, because it allows for interim rules to be created, which we know it takes a long time sometimes to develop these rules and regs, so it's always better to have at least a stopgap measure in place before the rules and regs are finalized. And so I appreciate the efforts of the author and I rise in support of this bill. Sidoz Massey.
Sidoz Massey, Senator, on Bill 179-36LS, is there any other member who'd like to be recognized? Legislative Secretary Shalt. Speaker Turlahey, you are recognized.
Sidoz Massey. The implementation of rules and regulations for the licensure of adoption agencies operating in Guam is urgent, considering the enactment of Public Law 36-39 and Public Law 36-40 on July 2021. Both public laws authorize independent adoption agencies, quote, "duly licensed" under Guam law, unquote, to play key roles in the foster placement and adoption of children, which is traditionally the responsibility of social services. These authorizations were enacted into law prior to the adoption of any rules and regulations for the licensure of independent adoption agencies on Guam by the Department of Public Health and Social Services. Deputy Director Terry Uggan confirmed that there are currently no rules in place for the review of any actions or to regulate any actions taken under these new laws. We are in a situation right now where there are no rules or regulations or interim rules to safeguard the wealth being of children. Public Health is not able to truly monitor the number of adoption cases filed, adoptions granted, termination of parental rights filed and granted, number of adoption cases that have not had home studies, and the number of children adopted that have left the island. They're not notified and are not able to monitor these cases. Unfortunately, testimony provided by Public Health during the hearing begged the question of the department's urgency to have at the least interim rules and regulations in place. Public Health opposed Bill 179 during the hearing citing a desire to uphold transparency by ensuring that community input is provided throughout the formulation of the interim rules and regulations process and not just at the end, as well as a preference to continue its current research with its Region 9 federal partners to ultimately construct Guam rules and regulations for the licensure of adoption agencies. Public Health was unable to provide a timeline, however, for rules and regulations with Region 9, and stated they would have to confer with Region 9 for a timeline that they would provide to the committee, and that timeline has yet to be received by the Committee on Health. During the hearing, both O'Halla Adoptions and Ms. Bethany Taylor of Harvest House testified on the urgent need for interim rules and regulations to be in place and for public input on such. It needs to be made clear that there is no law in place that prohibits Public Health from seeking stakeholder input throughout the drafting process of interim rules and regulations. Public Health testified before the legislature that they do currently have the authority to hold any kind of public hearing when creating rules and regulations. He stated that they were able to hold these hearings and to pay for the cost of a public hearing, to make sure that the ads would be posted to give people notice of public hearings. The sponsor of Bill 179 offered two reasonable amendments to address the concerns addressed by Public Health, an extension of the deadline for final rules and regulations, and the publication of Public Health's interim rules and regulations to the Guam Legislature's website for no less than 30 days prior to implementation to allow for public review. Bill 179 has been substituted by the prime sponsor to further extend the date for permanent rules and regulations from originally proposed to be March 2022 to now June 2022, and has added language in the bill requiring that Public Health conduct a public hearing on the proposed rules and regulations, and has therefore addressed the department's concerns. I support the substitution of this bill, 179, as it addresses the issue of transparency and the need to incorporate stakeholder feedback, even if that is something the department is not currently prohibited from doing, was never prohibited from doing, probably had a responsibility to do from the start. And I applaud the sponsor for doing her best to work with the department and follow through on addressing concerns that many had addressed that on the passage or in the debate on the public laws 36-40 and 36-39, which was allowing, authorizing adoption agencies to act on Guam without any rules and regulations, authorizing Public Health to monitor and regulate those agencies. So I support this Bill 179-36, and I urge my colleagues to do the same. Sidoz Massey.
Sidoz Massey, Madam Speaker. On the bill, Bill Number 179-36 as substituted.
If there's no other member to speak on Bill 179, I'd ask the sponsor to close. Senator Taitgui.
Sidoz Massey, Madam Speaker, and to my colleagues who spoke on this legislation, sidoz massey, adonkulu sidoz massey, for continuing, you know, forward with creating this legislation that was mostly needed and supported by the public, who've made several calls and to ask that we pursue to create these rules and regulations for the sake of our children, our most vulnerable children. And I'm sure everyone in this body, Madam Speaker, wants to do the same, to protect our most vulnerable children. And by doing that, is a vote yes on this legislation. Madam Speaker, the bill covers all the concerns by Public Health, and even adding a definition of adoption agency on there. We worked with legal counsel as well as our own research to ensure that this definition would help provide Department of Public Health what they need in moving forward, even in creating rules and regulations. The interim rules and regulations, especially the urgency, as you mentioned earlier, it is urgent. It's as simple as them having their public hearing, putting these rules and regulations together, having their public hearing, and then submitting it to the legislature, but not submitting it to the legislature for approval. That's almost like having the administrative rules and regs performed, which will take much longer. This is as simple as allowing Department of Public Health to create their interim rules and regulations and provide it to this legislature so that we can post it on the website. It's as simple as that. And then they can continue on with the administrative rules and regs process, which just takes a lot longer. That's what this bill does. So I ask my colleagues to please, for the sake of our children, to please vote for Bill 179-36. Madam Speaker, I request that this bill be moved, Bill 179-36, as substituted by a motion to the third reading file or the voting file.
Sidoz Massey, on that motion, is there any objection? Hearing is seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Paris, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I make the motion to recess for, to allow legal to engross some of the resolutions that are time-sensitive.
For how long?
Sorry, to process the resolutions that we voted on yesterday, so that it can be sent, there's some time-sensitive nature to especially one of them. So a request to recess for 30 minutes?
30 minutes?
Yes.
Motion to recess for 30 minutes, is there any objection? To allow legal to finish engrossing Resolution 210, is there any objection? Hearing no objection, motion carries. We're recess until 10:30.